The candidates running for Heath City Council Place Six are here in the bunker today for some straight talk in hopes of winning the vote of Rockwall County Conservatives. I'm Bunker Bob Steinhegen and this is a special edition of The Bunker Bob Show. Welcome to this special edition of The Bunker Bob Show and I know that you will be glad you took the time to hear what the candidates running for Heath City Council have to say. I want to give each candidate the opportunity to put their best foot forward, which is why, as I have always done, the candidates received a copy of the questions before they had to decide to participate. Through the magic of video, we create the illusion that both candidates are in studio at the same time. However, each candidate sat down with me for a one-on-one interview, which is edited together to create the illusion that they are here at the same time. This is why I will ask follow-up questions of one candidate, but not the other, and why the candidates do not respond to one another's answers. In fact, the first time that either candidate will have heard the answers from their opponent will be after this show has been posted. Now, I have never placed time limits on candidates' answers. However, when they go long, and sometimes they do, we will edit this for time. Since most of the candidates are not used to being on camera, as they're not professional politicians, in fact, the offices for which they are running are actually unpaid positions. Before we begin, I let every candidate know that they can re-answer or restate anything they say because the purpose of today's show is to allow them to be the best that they can be. So, let me introduce the candidates for today's show. So, now you lost your wife just three years ago in a sudden heart attack while you guys were about to go on a cruise. That's obviously has to be, has to have been quite an adjustment for you.
It is. It's been, it's been really tough. And we, we got married in 1983. I was 23 years old. Kind of left, you know, mom's house and then had Heather's, you know, so one funny joke of adjustment. I guess it was about two years and I finally started looking at how much soap I'm supposed to be putting in the washing machine. And Bob, for two years, I wasn't even using soap. I was using fabric softener.
Oh, my goodness.
I am not a good bachelor. I really struggled. The poor kids, mom went off to vacation and never came back. It's been tough. But community support has been phenomenal. This whole Rockwall Heath community has really stuck by me and that's helped a lot.
Wow, that's awesome. So you and your wife both graduated Dallas Christian?
We did. Yeah, we went to Dallas Christian. We met in eighth grade. So she grew up in the Lakewood area and I grew up in the Rowlett area. So met there. I started in second grade. I think she started in about third or fourth grade. And then we both graduated there. And then ultimately went to Abilene Christian together. And then after we graduated, ended up getting married and started a family.
So basically, you came from private school and now your kids are in public school. How is that different?
Well, so it was a big shift for us and, you know, for my family growing up and going to a private school. Once we moved out to the Heath community in 2010, we took a shot and said, hey, let's, let's just try this. We're in a great school system.
What age were your kids when you guys moved?
Our youngest was in, not in school yet. Our middle child would have been in first or second grade. And then our oldest was in fourth or fifth grade. So it was a little scary, just indifferent. And when we made that change, we've never looked back and it's been a great decision for our family. It's really helped us get involved in the community. And we've been thoroughly impressed with the education, but also the, the love that the teachers have for our students. So.
So you're with Farmers?
I am. Yes, sir. District Manager for Farmers Insurance. So I started right out of college. Started at insurance agency, had no really insurance experience and didn't really, had a business management degree out of, at Abilene Christian University. Started my agency right out of college, built a scratch agency. About four or five years in, the company came to me and said, hey, I'd like you to look at the district manager side. In our model at Farmers, district manager is still a sole proprietor. So it's still your own business. So I love that aspect of it. My main function is to recruit new agency owners into the business and manage an existing group. So we have about 70, 80 agency owners that we work with. And then those agents represent another 200 employees as well. So I was talking about the bobblehead doll there. So my nickname is Captain Exception. So if we get a policy that, you know, gets declined or is something that, that needs some help on, they call me and say, hey, I'll try to go to the company and get it an exception. So it actually has a, like a Superman pulling back with our district number in there with a bobblehead. So any of my Zoom calls that I'm doing with my agents, I try to hide it and put it right in there and show it to them.
That's great.
And I already have a big enough head. So on that bobblehead doll, it even makes it bigger. So it's, it's pretty interesting.
Yeah. Why did you and your family choose Heath? And how long have you been here?
Yeah. So we moved to Heath in 2010, started in Buffalo Creek, lived there for four or five years. We chose Heath. I've kind of always had an eye on, when I grew up in Rowlett, Heath and the Rockwall area. And we chose it. We love the small town feel, the bigger lots, the, the community involvement. That is just something that we're passionate about. And once we moved in, I just don't see us ever going anywhere else. We just love it. That, that small town feel is really everything. And I hope, and obviously as a parent, I hope my kids choose that same community because it's something that we believe in heavily.
Wonderful. Rich, and so you've been, you've been on Heath City Council for what, about 12 years?
That's correct.
Okay. And so you've been, you've obviously enjoyed it. Why did you choose to make a home in the city of Heath? And how long have you lived here? And I know that you've got a lot of family who have been here, what, four generations?
Yes, four generations. Well, my dad passed away about a year and a half ago also. But at that point, I had four generations.
Yeah. So why, why Heath?
Well, you know, we knew, we lived in Garland and we had two young daughters and we wanted to find a more open place, more country. And we happened to be driving through Heath and into Antigua Bay. God knows how we found it. I don't know if you know where Antigua Bay is, but most people don't, right? And, and we saw this house. It was dusk. The house was vacant. And Heather said, that's the house. That's, that's the house I want. And it's on a peninsula, out on Lake Ray Hubbard. Rush Creek Yacht Club's across the cove from us. So, you know, it has the, the dinging sailboat noises that I remember as a kid, growing up in Long Island. We had 2,000 open acres from us all the way to Highway 80. Clements, you know, Clements land. It has just been fantastic. I mean, we were so lucky to find that, that house. And I've been there since 1995. So we lived here 26 years.
Wow. Wow. So, so why are you running for reelection on the city council?
I'm running for reelection because I want to continue the job of what I've been doing. Frankly, everything my opponent's saying is going to do, I'm, I'm already doing. I've worked hard on the comprehensive plan. I've been on there for the last two rewrites of that. I'm on the park board, the Park and Trail Master Plan, worked very hard on that. We have the, the center overlay district that we're working on. You know, there's just a lot to do. We've really got the division set, the plan set. Now we're just refining them. And I would like to stay engaged to make sure that it happens.
Excellent. Jeff?
Yeah. So running for city council is really two things. One's a personal reason. You know, over the last four to six years, the negative rhetoric that we've seen, my kiddos have been watching that. And I've really been trying to talk to them about getting involved, just like my father did, about service and serving their community. But it's been tough. You know, they see all the negativity. And my biggest concern is the next generation of strong conservative Christian leaders are not going to want to get involved because they've seen all the nastiness. And so for me, I realized I'm telling them that, but I haven't done it myself. And so I need to step up and lead. And so this is my opportunity to, to, to show them that I want to get involved. And then why Heath City Council, you know, obviously Ashley and I love this city. We're passionate about keeping Heath special and unique and the small town home feel. And so I want to do everything in my power to, to serve the residents, not only for today, but keeping that for the future generations.
And so Jeff, you're running against incumbent. Why, why, why are you running against incumbent?
Yeah. So really, it was, it was a simple decision for me. You know, as a conservative, I'm a big believer in term limits. You know, we have, the current incumbent has been there for 12 plus years. And I believe in term limits, simply put. And I think ultimately, if I'd been there 10 years or 12 years, I'd hope somebody come to me and say, hey, term limits are important and it's time to go. And that's ultimately why we chose to run for Place Six.
Well, as, as a home rule city, Heath has the ability to, to change its charter and put term limits in the charter. Is that something you would support?
Hundred percent support it. Matter of fact, in my early conversations with most of the council members, just introducing myself, I asked them if they believe in term limits. Every one of them said, or most of them said, yes, they believe in term limits, but not in this case, because it affects them. So I believe in term limits. I think it's something we need to look at going forward. And if elected, I will definitely be a part of that.
And if, if elected, would you adhere to a term limit? And what would that term limit be?
You know, I need to investigate, kind of use other cities as examples, but I would think anywhere from four to six years, I think would be good. But I would love to investigate that issue and see what is applicable in the market.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Though the race for city council is technically nonpartisan one, which political party best reflects your values and why? Jeff?
Well, definitely a conservative. I grew up in a really strong conservative Christian family. So we went to Dallas Christian. My family was very close knit and we were always taught to get involved, serve our fellow man. So definitely a conservative.
And so Republican Party is where you're, do you do any, any activities or volunteer work?
I've been trying to get more and more involved, attended the Republican Men's Group breakfasts. So for Farmers Insurance, we, we, from time to time, will go down to Austin and get to meet with our local legislators. And so that has been the enjoyment of my life, just getting to meet with them, talk to them. We always have issues that we're worried about. I think one of the most recent ones was texting and driving. That's a big concern for us on the insurance side. So going to see our reps and talk about the concerns that we have. It's really, really been influential to see all the work that they're doing, all the bills that they're passing. And so it's, it's been exciting for me to get to see that side of it. I'm definitely not a politician. I'm a small business owner. And so that's why this is new for me, but I'm excited to get involved.
Excellent. Rich?
Well, you know, it's funny you say that. When, when I'm campaigning, people ask the same question. And, and for some reason, you know, again, I, again, first ran 12 years ago. So I used blue signs because I just thought it was friendlier, you know? And people look at us, well, fortunately, I am your GOP precinct two seat chairperson since 2014.
I see.
So, and my first vote on Long Island, New York was for Ronald Reagan. When I was old enough to vote, I waited on that long line, you know, at the school and, and voted for Ronald Reagan. And the, the values of the Republican Party really, you know, resonate with me, you know, with the personal accountability, minimal government, you know, minimal taxation, you know, work hard, make your own money. I've been doing that. I work in Greenville. They call it now L3 Harris. It was these systems when I started. You know, so I've saved for a long time. I've, I've invested well. It's worked out for me. I really, for my conservative lifestyle, I've got all the money I need to do that. So I don't get paid to be on Heath City Council. And I get no benefits whatsoever from being there. I just enjoy it.
Very good. Very good. What do you see as the city council's primary role and responsibility after 12 years on the council?
Yeah. I mean, you know, I guess to beginning, kind of like a Maslow's hierarchy, it probably never ends. You know, it's got to be the safety, you know, people feeling safe and comfortable and, and have a good Department of Public Safety, which is, you know, Dennis Watson just, just recently endorsed me. I call him the father of DPS. In fact, the building is the Dennis Watson DPS building.
The Heath building?
In Heath building. Right, right. Yeah. He was, Dennis was the, the police chief and the city manager when I first moved there. He had both hats at the time. So anyway, that's a great point. So the, of course, then as like Maslow, as you want to get more, you know, higher up on the level. So yeah, you want amenities, you know, for your citizens. You do want minimal government. You want minimal taxes and reasonable fees so you can provide the services for your citizens. But in our case, we're just over 50% built out. So there's a big responsibility in making sure that that happens right, because it only happens once. You know, once you're there, it's permanent. So I would really like to, to make sure that we develop in the way that the citizens have the vision.
Now, you were on the city council when John Ratcliffe was the mayor?
That's right. And I was on the council when John was mayor. In fact, John is the one who swore me on to the council. And I later helped John run for mayor. And I helped John run for Congress. And Heather and I got to go to DC to, to the inauguration when, when he won. And it's just been a great experience. And he, he has won several mentors. You know, of course, you know, Terry Garrett's now our sheriff. He was our chief for years.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yes. Yeah. So I've dealt with him. Lauren Leichty, I think is kind of a staple, you know, in the, in the society.
Yeah, I'll forgive you for that one. And Lauren knows I'm joking.
Well, you know, there's two things to that. There is, yeah. But he's been a good mentor.
I have to stick it to Lauren every time I can, because he does it to me. So.
And he does it to me too.
He does it to everybody. Yeah.
But if you've got time for one, bless, because you know, Lauren probably has, has, how would you put it, represented some folks that some of us don't maybe agree with.
Exactly.
But you know, when you get back to my past tragedy, you know, when I first got back from Miami, when Heather passed away, I just drug myself to the airport and just said, take me home. It was almost Christmas Eve, nothing. I mean, it was terrible. I didn't even get my car at the time, you know? I just got home, you know? So I went back to, it was Heather's truck. And I thought, what am I gonna do? I thought, you know, what, you know? And, and every time I would have a fight with Lauren, you mentioned that, you know, Heather would say, well, you remember Lauren and Mary have been our friends for years and years. So I was driving my, my wife's truck home from the airport. I called Lauren and he came and helped me. He, he left his family vacation in Florida and flew here, did Heather's funeral, flew back and, and just, just took care of everything. I mean, that, that's a really special friend. But you know, so a lot of, you know, David Sweet, I've known David Sweet since he was a councilman, Jim Pruitt, all these people you're talking about in this community, I know them. They know me. You can ask anyone. Some of them have endorsed me. Cliff has endorsed me. Lee has endorsed me, your county commissioners, you know? Others, you know, may not, but ask them. They, they all know me. They know what I represent and, and what I've accomplished.
Very good. Very good. Jeff?
For me, it's simple. It's service. My job is to serve the residents that I represent. You know, it's simply put, I don't mean to make, not answer the question fully, but, but service is, is really everything to me. You know, I am a small business owner and I represent agents and customers. If I'm not transparent with them, if I don't serve them and listen to the needs that they have, I don't have customers. And I feel like the city council, that's their number one priority. We've got to listen. We've got to be transparent. It's not my agenda. It's what they want me to do is really how I see my, my role as a city council member.
Talk about transparency. What does transparency mean to you?
So a couple of things. One, transparency is any decision that we're making, they need to be involved. I need to be available to them. So they need to have my cell phone number. They need to know where I live. They need to know all the access points at which they can give their feedback to me. I don't run from that currently as a business owner and I definitely wouldn't run for that as a city council member.
So meetings and decisions that are, that are being made, a lot of, you know, one of, one of the biggest criticisms about executive sessions, like the City of McLean and Chisholm does most of their discussions behind closed doors. How do you, how are you going to ensure that, that transparency as far as deliberation of, of issues are, are done, not behind closed doors, but in public view?
Yeah, I think that's a great, great point. You know, I would like to see, we, we limit the executive sessions as much as possible, right? And if there is a sensitive issue that we need to address and it must be executive session, let's do it, right? Let's have that conversation. But there, in my opinion, there's not too many of those situations. And if there is something, we still need to get out in the, the neighborhoods and introduce ourselves, talk to about the issues and really get the perspective of the residents before we go into that executive session. Very critical to me.
How do you get that, that, you say, listen to the people. So how do you get, how do you listen to them?
Well, as we mentioned earlier, I've got a big sunburn right now. So for me, right now, that's door to door. I'm going belly to belly, introducing myself, talking about the issues, not necessarily what my agenda is, but listening to what the concerns of the residents. I was talking to a resident before we got here on the way and asking what their concern was. And I think that's something that I'm not going to do just only in the campaign session. I need to do it when I'm a city council member. Any decision we make, it needs to be with the residents in mind.
Very good. Very good. What is your vision for, for Heath?
Yeah. So great question. For me, the, the vision of Heath is in, in going door to door. And I know I keep bringing that, but I think that's a critical, asking residents, what, what do they want to see? Not today, but what do they want to see in the future? It really resonates with what, what really prompted Ashley and I to move here. It's that small town home feel. I need to continue to, to set a vision for the future of larger lots, single, protect the single family housing in that small community where we don't over commercialize, overpopulate the city. I think that's really what the residents want and that's definitely what attracted Ashley and I to Heath.
Excellent. Rich, you know, you've been on, on the city council 12 years, but, but obviously there's, there's a vision that goes along with it. You talked about how there's 50% build out, 50% more to go. So kind of give us a, a sense of what is that vision for you?
Yeah, no problem. That, and I think you have a question on, on attending council meetings before.
Yes, I do.
So officially, official capacity, I've attended 284 council meetings. It's really many more than that because I attended council meetings almost 10 years before I ran.
Is that right?
When Ed Thatcher was the city manager and, and John and folks were on there. They used to call me the sixth councilman before there was a Place Six.
Now, is this in the Scott Self days back?
Scott Self was in Rockwall. Yeah.
He was Rockwall. That's right. Okay.
Yeah. And he was also a county commissioner. Yeah. But so the vision, you know, I've seen the vision grow and I've seen it develop, work in the comprehensive plan, you know, and the town center overlay. So, so the vision is, is to maintain the open country field, you know, with open spaces and, and have a single central retail commercial area that's, that's walkable and friendly, that provides the amenities for organic growth to the citizens that are there now. It's not a vision of becoming a destination. It's not a vision of getting overbuilt on retail so that you have to put a bunch of multifamily in to support their retail. So, so it's still, still a simple country city that has sufficient high quality, low density residential and unique boutique retail that just accents it and makes it a wonderful place to live for a lifetime.
Standard service is a standard place for my wife and I would love, love what they've done that with that. And is that kind of the vision for, for business growth, that kind of feel as, as Heath grows?
Yes. Yeah, I think it, that standard service, it went in, because that corner, now the Perrys, they were the ones that wanted to put Home Depot size and, and retail and multifamily across, you know, where the cows are. But that corner never would be residential. I mean, that clearly was a, was a, you know, place to put retail and commercial. And, and and I supported that. You know, the city of Heath put half a million dollars from the EDC money into starting standard service. And then standard services to pay half of that back with us. Now, we gave them a stay because of COVID.
Oh, sure.
Right. And I don't mean to defer from, from your statement, but the other thing, the other thing that this council EDC did during COVID, because it's funny, my opponent says we're raising taxes during a pandemic. That's pretty crazy. So what we did is we put half a million dollars aside and we asked the businesses of Heath, what do you need and what do you need it for? And so we actually did three separate checks payouts to help get them through COVID. Some of them had just opened when COVID hit. That was a terrible time. So it was great. And David Lane, who runs our EDC, did a super job of administering that. So we took, we took city tax dollars from sales and turned around and gave it back to the, to the businesses that created that money and, and bolstered our business community. I think it was just absolutely brilliant. So yeah, Tom Thumb, great addition.
Wonderful.
I voted for that as well. There's another phase to Tom Thumb coming. I don't think we need a second grocery store, but.
A second phase to Tom Thumb?
A second phase to Tom Thumb. There's still more land there. And, and we worked hard with that developer to, to get it Tom Thumb in Heath, you know, like we wanted. And we did want a gathering place. That was the one thing we, was going to be the phase two thing. Yeah. So that, when they do phase two, they'll do it. Now, of course, now that Maluft has sold that whole development, you know, within a year, they're, they're done and gone. You have to watch that. People who develop, once they're done, they're done, they're money and run.
Very, very common.
But yeah, there's, there's many more. There's 125 acres of non-residential zoning in Heath, Texas. So we've really got to be careful and follow our comprehensive plan. We cannot support a million square feet of retail. It's just not, not ourselves.
Yeah. Very good. What's been the biggest surprise about the carrying out of the duties of city council since being elected?
You know, it has been fascinating over 12 years. I guess the biggest surprise was is I found myself at one point with, with a mayor and council that I was, that I was not in line with, that, that I thought was clearly more development oriented than, than citizen oriented. And was voting my way for, for quite a while. And Frank could get my butt kicked.
I've been there.
Yeah.
I know. I can feel your pain.
And, and then eventually the citizens actually looked at what was going on and said, enough's enough. And, and they had a plan that within two elections, they were going to replace the council.
Which they did.
And they did. And then Kevins, they looked at my website, richforheath.com. And they said, hey, you know what? Rich has been voting the right way for years. I'd never, I couldn't be more elated. I was like, oh my God, I wasn't wrong. I really wasn't wrong, you know? So they said, yeah, keep him. So, so I am the only surviving incumbent, the recovering incumbent, I call that when, you know? So that was a, both big surprise for me. I've seen a whole turnover of a council, you know, in my time. Much of the staff, you know, city manager, city secretary, you know, chief, a lot of new folks, a lot of people do not, frankly, remember how we got here or know, or see the pitfalls and can, can kind of predict and tell them, when you see this, this is what's going to happen. You know, when the developer says, I've already got 50 lots sold, you have a track home facility. So some of these things you learn through the nuances that really does take time. You just can't replace maturity.
Gotcha. Very good. So Jeff, how often do you attend city council meetings? And what have you learned from that experience, Jeff?
Yeah, great question. So the current Heath City Council meetings are not back in person. And honestly, when elected, that, that's going to be one of my first issues is we need to get those back in person as quick as possible. I have attended one meeting via Zoom and I've listened to the last 20 plus meetings online. But, you know, I needed those to be back in person. Those residents love going and getting to see us make decisions and see those tough conversations. And if elected, I need, I will work hard to get those back in person as fast as possible.
Excellent. So Jeff, of what local community work involvement are you most proud?
Okay. So obviously I got, I got young children. So sports is a big deal in our family. We're a big basketball and baseball family that I can't really help my daughter with cheer very much. That's a, that's a nasty deal. But youth sports is a big passion of mine. And so I've always tried to be involved in youth sports, whether it's coaching a team, supporting a team and really working with the, the community. And so that, that's probably a big one. In my private sector, I'm highly involved in the backpacks for kids, which I think is a great organization and really helping underprivileged kids. And so that, that's a probably a passion of mine. But youth sports is, is a big deal for me.
What, did you play?
I did. I played basketball at Abilene Christian. At the time, it was a small Division Two school. Now they're Division One. And we actually luckily beat Texas and.
That's good bull.
Yeah. That was a great opportunity. And actually the coach there was, played with him at Abilene Christian.
No kidding?
Yeah. It's, we were so excited for him and his family and Abilene Christian. What a, what a great opportunity.
Wow. Excellent. Excellent.
I couldn't play on this team today though.
What's that?
I wouldn't have been able to play on this team today.
Don't say, you don't have to say that. Come on now. Maybe not today, but you know, back then, yeah, me neither. Yeah. Rich, what are you most proud of since being elected to city council?
I, I am proud that, that I have always stood by a comprehensive plan. And again, I was on for two rewrites of that. In 2018, you know, our latest rewrite, we actually had a meeting at Heath High. Over 200 Heath citizens showed up for that meeting to give input on a comprehensive plan. You know, so when, when I stand on your door and knock and, and, you know, campaign, I'm telling you, that is a solid document that was created by the visions of the citizens of Heath. And, and I am most proud that I've stood by that. I, I have been against at least three multifamilies that, that have tried to come into the community. You know, again, the Home Depot size, you know, retail, the one to come into the community. Other corners that had maybe four acres in, in the town center overlay, but wanted to blow it to 20, you know, when we already have 125 acres. So I guess what I'm proud of is I understand the comprehensive plan. I've been there through two rewrites. So the other issue is, then you have planned developments. You can have all the best ornaments, you can have, you can have all the best ordinances, all the best plans. But when someone comes up with a planned development, it's all up for negotiation. And a lot of times that's where we got hosed. You know, that like Heath, Heath Coffin Yacht might be one example. 1,112 houses on 700 something acres, you know? You know, very, very high density, low lot sizes. When, when someone does a planned development, then all that goes out the window and then you're down to negotiating. You need a really solid council because that's not necessarily bad. You know, it's not bad. You know, we have others who provided parks and trails and have done really good things. You know, I'm not saying a golf course isn't a good thing. I just think the density is too high. So you really have to have a council who understands the comprehensive plan. And if you get into a, to a planned development negotiation, they know a good deal from a bad deal. And a fair deal, I'm sorry. And really a fair deal for both.
So does Heath have an ordinance of a lot size, minimum lot size per home?
We do. The, and again, the comprehensive plan says one acre per household. But we've accentuated that to what it actually does say and should be and will be one developable acre per household. So what's happened in the past, so you have 10 acres. You think it's 10 houses. You know, six of those are floodplain. So now you know, you have 10 houses squeezed up to wherever there's not.
We have the same thing in McLean and Chisholm. They built Sonoma Verde on 500, 1,100 homes on 509 acres. And then Triple Creek has been approved for 1,876 homes on less than 500 buildable acres because most of the 1,300 acres is in a floodplain. So those of you in, in McLean and Chisholm know exactly what that is. So we wish we had someone like you on, on the council back then.
Yeah. Yeah, I get it. Yeah. Yeah. I get it. I see it. And, and that's how it should be.
So you're, you're, you're a staunch advocate for the, for the open spaces and, and, and bigger lot size.
You know, it's, it, um, you know, it's funny because even, uh, when David Sweet was mayor, he's, he'd always kid me, he says, hey, Rich, yeah, you keep, uh, surviving on the back of your citizens, you know, and don't have any commercial retail. So heck, you know, what Rockwell is, why do you even have taxes? You should be paying people.
Exactly. Yes.
So yeah, I am a staunch, uh, I, I think that if we continue to build with high quality, low density residential. And, and again, uh, boutique, unique retail, we can survive on our taxes because you know, when, when, uh, at least at one point, when your average new home construction, seven hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It's very difficult to make money on a seven hundred thousand dollar rent house.
Right.
If you're building a bunch of, of little houses, and I don't mean to be, again, I live, you know, I live in, in Antigua Bay, which has quarter acre lots.
Okay.
My daughter lives in, in Kennel Light Park. You know, my dad was in the, the Little Blue House by Heath Hall. I don't know if, you know, a lot of people might, he's, you know, might know that.
Okay.
You know, you, you have the enclave, uh, there in Buffalo Creek. You have, uh, Tennis Village. Now you have Heath Coffin Yacht. You have condos at Rush Creek.
Yeah.
Uh, you have, uh, duplexes at Lakeaway. So I guess what I'm saying is we have a plethora of, of, uh, high density housing.
Yeah.
It, it's not the current citizens' responsibility to build homes, uh, that are, that are required density, uh, just because folks want them, you know, because that's not what the current citizens of Heath want.
Well, and Heath becomes, Heath becomes a much more desirable place to live when you have the, uh, these kinds of standards and you uphold them, don't they?
Yes. And, and your property values are high. So, so, uh, I mean, property tax in equation. Now, the city tax is only about eighteen percent of your total tax.
Okay.
But, uh, and, and that's the other thing I want to point out. Now we have lowered our tax rate the last three years in a row. Uh, but we do get additional revenue because of growth and because of, uh, property value.
Absolutely. Absolutely. If reelected to city council, who is and who has been, will be your primary constituent? And how do you intend to make sure that you are listening to their concerns?
Well, Bob, um, that's a great question because this same thing I've ran on the, the last couple of times, the, the current citizens are my number one customer. You know, they, they live in Heath now, uh, they're paying the taxes now. And, and, you know, again, I'm really not, uh, anti-developer. I, I've just obviously had some, some difficult experiences, you know, with them. Uh, but I, I do really believe that, um, when we talk about taxes and, and fees or whatnot, that, uh, permit fees, building fees, inspection fees, ordinance fees that are related to development really should be paid by the developer. You know, not by the current citizens of Heath. And, and I just think that's only fair. And, and they invested a lot of money. Uh, they've moved to the city of Heath to have the open space, uh, in the country field and they want parks and trails. And, and that's what I want to give them because we are, we say we are premier lakeside community. You know, they have that, uh, scenic cities of Texas. You know, we, we made, we made gold. Uh, we're going to go try it for platinum this year. And as a matter of fact, it was so cool is, is the city of Heath is the cover page of their website.
Wow. Is that right?
We have come a long way, uh, have a long way to go. I'm also on the park board. I don't know if I mentioned that earlier. Hope create the path program, Parks and Trails for Heath.
Nice.
Uh, that's where people can donate a little extra money on their utility bill. And we gathered together and we've already put trees, uh, in the parks and benches to, to help, uh, augment. And all our EDC, I have to give them a really, really, really big kudo. Uh, they've dedicated twenty-five percent of their income to, uh, park, um, improvement projects. So, so we've really got a lot of good stuff going on. But yes, the, the current citizens of our, of our city are, are our current customers, uh, number one customers.
You're, you're constituent.
Yeah. And, but you do have to remember the staff because these staff are working, you know, in our city. Uh, especially a lot of the folks that are frontline people, you know, our DPS guys, fire, uh, municipal court, uh, city secretary, the people at the front desk. Um, I, I do like, as you mentioned, I like to listen them to what their needs are. Uh, again, I've been here twenty-six years, twelve on council. Uh, there are some new, but I've known several of them for a very long time, been my neighbors even, you know? Um, so I do, do like to listen to them developers. Uh, you know, I'll be honest, a lot of times the developers would really appreciate just some straight direction.
Hmm.
You know what I mean? Like if you knew what you wanted, they would probably give it to you.
Exactly. Yeah.
How big a park do you want? How big? And, and that's why I love having our, our comprehensive plan and our, you know, overlay that you can educate these developers. Hey, these plans are in place. Come to Heath, build like Tom Thumb. Come to Heath, build, you know, give the amenities we expect and we'll approve it. I've approved, uh, essentially everything that meets our comprehensive plan. I've approved several, you know, commercial dermatologists, you know, Tom Thumb, uh, and residential. If they meet the plan, I vote for it. But I do listen to people. You know, one thing, uh, it actually used to frustrate Heather. We couldn't go anywhere. I couldn't go to Kroger's at the time or, you know, the movies after dinner. And someone is going, Rich, I've got something I want to talk to you about, you know?
Yeah.
And, uh, and sometimes they're not real happy.
Oh, sure. Sure.
And I never took it personal. So, so I have to say, I've been here a long time. People do never hesitate to approach me. And Heather say, boy, I would just like to go to the grocery store, not get accosted.
Well, very good. Jeff, I know you've talked about, uh, going door to door, which is great.
Yeah.
But, uh, how else might you do that?
Well, so, uh, there, there's, uh, so first and foremost, uh, my primary, uh, uh, constituents is the residents of Heath, uh, and, and all of them. Uh, you know, we're in election season. Uh, there's, I'm going to have voters that vote for me and there's going to be some that vote against me. Uh, but when elected, I represent everyone, uh, I, and, and I will gladly do that. Uh, so that's first and foremost. Uh, as far as, uh, listening to them, I think there's, uh, multiple streams of communication that we can do, uh, whether it be, uh, opening up to Facebook. Uh, you mentioned door to door, uh, text messaging. Uh, I want to have every one of them to have my cell phone. I, I've got to listen to them. Uh, obviously we're, if we get those meetings back in person, that's a great opportunity for us to listen. Uh, because, uh, a, a citizen that is coming to those meetings, uh, is passionate about their city.
That's true.
And it's my responsibility to listen, uh, whether I agree or not, it's my responsibility to listen, uh, and, and I really, I really, really feel strongly. We need to get those back in person.
Excellent. What, what do you see as the biggest challenge or challenges facing Heath? Jeff?
Uh, wow, this is a big one. Uh, so, um, going back to kind of the vision of the, the city and kind of where we're going. Um, we, we've got to continue to work hard to, uh, keep that small town feel, um, as new residents move in. Uh, we, we don't need to really change the foundational, uh, items of our city. We're keeping that small town feel. We've got to work hard, uh, to keep our city safe and secure. That's not easy as we've grow. Uh, you know, we've got to look, uh, at, uh, continuing to invest in our DPS. That's a really important one. We've got some traffic and congestion issues that we've got to always continue to address, um, which, which, uh, is, is critical. Uh, and then, uh, single family neighborhoods. Uh, we've got to do all of those things while trying to keep property taxes as low as possible. That's a big challenge, uh, and definitely one I'm ready to, to tackle.
Excellent. Rich?
The biggest challenge is, um, kind of as, as to recap what we said before, is to make sure we complete the development of our city right. You know, to, to keep the current citizens in mind, uh, to not overdevelop, to, to develop with, with the high quality and low density, you know, that the citizens came to expect because that's what they paid for when they got here. Uh, also as we grow, uh, again, if we, we've been putting about a hundred houses on the ground a year, that's not, that's not terrible at all.
No.
You know, uh, we can evaluate our budget. We can look at our DPS needs. You know, we can look at our staff needs. We can adjust. Uh, so that's great. So that, 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 um, steady growth is what we need. And, and we need, um, again, to keep the taxes low as can be. Uh, and keep our municipality as lean as can be. Uh, and also, um, and we're doing it, saving ahead for the new fire station has got to come up when we grow. You know, the fire tricks has got to, got to come up. That's one of the reasons we're keeping the taxes low because we're trying to pay ahead rather than borrow money to do these things. So I think if we can continue, uh, those tasks, although they're difficult, uh, we'll truly succeed.
Very good. For the first time in Texas history, state and local government mandated involuntary shutdowns of private businesses and houses of worship in an effort to stop the spread of the COVID pandemic. Whether or not you supported this action by government, voters have the right to know under what circumstances you support a municipal government shutting down local businesses and/or houses of worship. Rich?
Yeah, that is a fascinating question. It is. I, I, you know, I couldn't think of any reason that the city of Heath municipal government would ever, you know, have a mandate to, to shut down our businesses, you know, uh, and place where, as I mentioned, you know, my, my current girlfriend, Tara McBay, owns Juvenu Med Spa, entrepreneur, they're in Rockwell, employs people, you know, so, uh, I mean, I completely get it. She was shut down, you know? Um, other than, uh, what would happen this time, a state, uh, or, or, or Washington mandate? I, I don't know if you can not do that without causing yourself some problems. But I just couldn't imagine a scenario that, that, uh, within Heath, Texas, you know, with about eight thousand something people in, in a twelve square mile area, uh, would have some event that would require shutting down the businesses, you know, and churches. Uh, what I say, it's an interesting question. What I would like to see is I would like to see the Chinese government be held accountable for, for what has happened to us.
Yes.
Uh, and happens every year. Right?
Yep.
Uh, and I mean financially and, and this, this should be stopped. What government has more control over their people than China? There's just no reason that we have to continue to put up with these atrocities that are, that are imposed on, on Texas, United States and the world. But no, I can't see any instance why our Heath municipality would have to shut down buildings and wor- places of worship.
Wonderful. Jeff?
Yeah, I could talk on this for an hour and I know we don't have, uh, an hour, but, uh, so I, I have, uh, seen the other side of this, right? Uh, I am a small business owner.
Yes, you are.
I represent, uh, seventy small business, business owners. Uh, I represent seventy small business owners and their two hundred plus employees. Uh, I also represent their customers, uh, that have been affected by that shutdown. And so, uh, it, it's been very, uh, significant to me over the last twelve months. If you think about it, this was about the time last year where we started that whole process.
Yes, it is.
And dealing with, uh, the concern and getting those phone calls in the middle of the night from my agency owners, how am I going to make this work? How are we going to do this? They're talking to their restaurant owner, cut clients that, uh, they're being forced to shut down. So, uh, it has been very, uh, uh, weighty on me and that's not the right word to say, but it's just been very serious.
Makes sense.
Of a concern and, um, it's one that, um, I've lived on the other side and it, it scared us to death. And it's, it's something that, um, uh, I am passionate about not ever letting that happen again. I think ultimately as we, uh, learn from that event, uh, we can learn that it's time for us to stand up a little bit and, uh, take some ownership of that. And I will definitely do that going forward.
So under what circumstances would you support a municipal government shutting down businesses or houses of worship?
Yeah, I, I, I can't really see, uh, a circumstance where we would, would shut it down. Uh, definitely when you're looking at where we're at right now, uh, we seem to be trending in the right direction and, uh, we're in a good spot. So, uh, to me, um, it, it's, I can't really see a, 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 a way that we should shut down.
Very good. Very good. As the population grows, citizens clamor for more government services while also fighting against higher taxes. What experience and solutions do you bring to the table that might help accomplish both?
Yeah. Great question. I think, uh, you know, taxes is definitely on the residents' mind. It's, it's a big concern and definitely something that we've got to be, uh, uh, aggressive to tax. So, um, it, uh, to tackle, uh, I am, uh, really going to work hard on this. This is a big concern of mine. Um, you know, in the recent, uh, budget, uh, that my opponent, um, uh, chose to bring in additional two hundred thousand dollars in, in, uh, property tax revenue. Um, they did tweak the tax rate down a little bit, but when they're choosing that tax rate, uh, they know what the valuations are. They know what new homeowners are coming in. And they chose to bring in an additional two hundred thousand dollars in tax revenue. And so that, uh, made the effective tax rate higher, uh, which was definitely a concern, uh, to the residents as I go door to door. Uh, I'll kind of put it in, I'm terrible.
And you would not have voted for that.
I would not have voted for that. And, and all my friends would tell me I'm terrible at analogies. So let me try one and you can, you can tell me if you're.
Well, I'm an Aggie, so you won't have any problem with it.
Okay. So, uh, do you like pizza?
I love pizza. Yes.
Say you're at your local pizza, uh, store and, uh, you know, you, you get the same order every time and the owner of the pizza shop goes, hey, I got great news for you, Bob. Uh, we, your, your orders was ten dollars and now it's going to be nine dollars, right? Well, you're kind of excited about that. You eat your pizza, things are good. You get your bill and your bill's twelve dollars, right? Um, even though you took a dollar or the, the owner took a dollar less, all the other fees that came with it made it twelve dollars, right?
Right.
Well, the effective bill is twelve dollars, even though the, the owner said they took nine. So the, the customers and the residents are seeing the effective tax rate go up, which is a concern. That's real money to them, especially in the last twelve months when they've had the concern of losing their job. All the fear that they've had, uh, that, that's something that I definitely want to address. You know, in this, uh, most recent year, uh, we ended up with a little over a million dollar surplus in our budget, uh, which is significant. Uh, we got there by partially by the increase in, in tax revenue. Uh, we also, uh, uh, lowered our expenses, which I think is a great thing. It's something we always need to be looking at.
Yeah.
We also got the benefit of some, uh, increase in sales tax revenue. So we recently put in the new Tom Thumb Center. We're seeing some, uh, and later in the year, we saw some increase in the sales tax revenue. One that I've, as, as I've been studying this issue that I thought was pretty intriguing, uh, is we're seeing an increase in sales tax revenue from our Amazon purchases.
Yes.
Uh, and that, that's really, uh, exciting. Um, I do have a concern though, um, you know, residents of Heath are super passionate, right? So, uh, I will admit that I am a, uh, Amazon, uh, significant purchaser.
Sure, sure. Most of us are.
Yeah, that's right.
Most of us are.
Uh, in, in the numbers that, that we see is we're, we're, we're doing two hundred, over two hundred Amazon purchases a day in the city.
Oh, I see. Okay. Yes. Okay.
Um, it, when you go on and do an Amazon purchase, most of the time it will allow you to put Heath or Rockwell. If we put Rockwell, those tax dollars goes to Rockwell. If we put Heath, those tax dollars goes to Heath. A lot of our residences don't know that. Uh, they just choose what, which one gets there. But actually, if you choose bu- one, either one, both of them will get there, uh, but they don't know to choose Heath. I believe that we're missing out on some dollars and we can go back and go get some of those dollars.
Yes, you can.
Definitely do that.
Yes.
And I think the city council is definitely working on that.
Yeah.
But we need to go out and communicate to the residents that, hey, going forward, uh, make sure you choose Heath. The, the Heath residents are super passionate. They, they would much rather those tax dollars go to us. We need to go out in a major communication strategy. And again, that's back to that transparency thing. We've got to get out there in the, 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 uh, residence, uh, voice and, and really let them understand that that's a, a big critical piece. So, uh, going back to my, being a small business owner, uh, I will try to do everything I can to find new ways to make, uh, revenue without over-commercializing our city and without taxing the, the residents.
Very good. Rich?
Um, so the experiences are to, to know how, uh, our municipality runs. Um, which I'm not saying we're extremely different than others, but, um, we are a small town, uh, different people run in different ways. Uh, and some people need more staff than others in different areas. We're, we're always constantly reviewing that. So as we grow, as I mentioned earlier, we put a hundred houses and, and, you know, a grocery store, lifetime. You can, uh, you can adjust to that, your budget and your staff, uh, your DPS. Um, so I, I think I have the experience to know when it's time to, you know, put up some funds. Uh, in fact, we're putting funds up ahead of time, like I say, to, to build the next municipal need, uh, building that needs to be done. Uh, rather than, you know, doing bonds for, you know, millions of dollars. Um, I know what the roles of the people that are currently in our government, you know, the, the various directors and whatnot. Um, I know the level of effort that it takes for them to do their job. Uh, I've been through the buddy, budgeting process, uh, several times. So I know how that works. And, uh, I think I have the skills to keep our, uh, taxes as, as low as possible. Uh, and fees, uh, utilities are, are pretty high in Heath. We're, we're working on that. So that's one experience that I have. Um, and, and I just think that general knowledge and maturity would really help to, to keep us focused on the citizens and what it costs to live there.
Yeah. So under what circumstances would you support an increase to the city's tax rate? Rich?
Um, wow, that's a tough one. I can't say I've never done it, you know, because we, at one point, we needed a lot of work on our, our roads, our sewer, our water, you know, our infrastructure, our roads.
Roads are the most expensive thing by far.
Yeah. I mean, and, and we've, we've spent, uh, over twenty million on those. And, and the problem is like especially water and sewer, that's not sexy stuff. You don't get to play baseball on it or do anything, anything fun. Uh, so I really, I, I don't see any instance where I would support a, a tax increase because, because I think it would just, I mean, I couldn't think of anything that wasn't excessive that it would be for. You know, if we had some national disaster, you know, we had our municipal buildings wiped out by, by a tornado or something and, and we had to recover, uh, quickly. Uh, we do try to keep, uh, a, a pretty good, uh, excess fund balance, uh, just for that kind of thing.
Yeah.
But for the way we're running now and, and our typical, you know, um, functionality and our costs and our income and our expenditures, uh, I just don't see any reason we'd raise taxes.
Very good. Jeff?
I can't see a, a, a reason why currently we would ever take, uh, increase in our property tax, uh, rate. Matter of fact, I think we need to aggressively take a decrease. Uh, but I will tell you this, if there comes a need where we have to take a property tax increase, I will do everything in my power to go to every resident and communicate why we're doing it.
Okay.
Let's say that, uh, we need to invest more in our fire station or we need to buy, uh, 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 equipment for a fire station. Or we need a new DPS office. Let's say we have a need that we can't address in any other way other than raising our property tax. I can't see that happening, but let's just say that it does. I will go door to door if I have to. I will call every resident on the phone if I have to, to make sure they understand what we're doing, why we're doing it, so that they're not blindsided when they get that bill.
Very good. Are there items in this year's city budget that you see as out of proportion, unnecessary or out of control?
Uh, I, I don't know out of control is the right word. Uh, I do have, uh, some concerns about our unassigned general fund. Uh, with the most recent one million dollar surplus that we had in this last year, that is, uh, ballooned over to four point six million dollars. Uh, I, I take that very serious. I take every dollar that we take from a resident very serious. That is not the city's money. That is the residents' money. And, uh, so to me, I, I'd like to get involved with that and really dive in to see, do we need that amount? Obviously we need to have some reserves to make sure that if something goes bump in the night, we've got some resources there. But, uh, that to me seems like it's going the other direction. Uh, and if we're not going to, we, we must use that to continue to take that rate, uh, uh, tax rate deduction. Uh, so that's something I, I really got to get involved with.
Good. Rich?
You know, as, as an outspoken guy, you know, uh, they probably know that already if, if I did. We, uh, we have a really cool way of making our budget. Um, so I guess the short answer is no, but you know, let me go into why. Um, you know, the, which our, our budget, uh, process is actually starting this month, next year, because our, our awesome new, uh, city manager, uh, Rita Adams, uh, is, uh, witch out. So, so we're, we're getting ready. So, so we're, we're getting ready for some maternity leave.
Oh, I see. Getting ahead of the game.
Yeah, getting ahead of the game. Normally it's not till later.
Right.
Uh, but again, very proactive lady, ma- magnificent. Um, so what we do is we get together and the city council says, here's our priorities. Here's what we want to accomplish, like not raising taxes, you know, if we need some DPS folks, we, we kind of set the goals. So at the time, uh, and again, I credit Kelsey Nealon with this too, that he's done a great job with this. That, okay, it's our budget at that point. We're all going to decide what we're going to do, uh, what it's going to take. And then, and then the, the staff goes and they do the numbers, crunch the numbers, here's our projected income, here's our projected growth. You know, here's our projected expenses and we say, here's what we can do. Is this okay? And maybe we adjust some, uh, and our, our priorities, if we have to adjust priorities, you know? And then once we all agree, as we say, then it's Aretha's budget. You know, now it's for her to execute.
Got you.
And, and if there's any changes required, you know, during the year, shifting or something comes up, um, then, then we discuss it and we may consider revising the budget. So, but we all know, and, and I'll tell you what, the, the staff there, uh, it's nothing like, uh, uh, which is in a good way in this case, nothing like the military, you know, nothing like businesses. They don't look at that budget as a goal. They really don't. I mean, they so often underrun their budgets that, that is so impressive. It's not like they spend it because they think they won't get it back next year.
Got you.
We have a really open, um, trusting relationship, uh, in our budgeting process. So, uh, I think it's fantastic and no, I have no surprises and I think it's going to work out fine.
Pretty unheard of. Yeah, that's good. All right. Last question. Is there a specific issue or set of issues on which you used to focus if reelected? Rich?
I would, I would, I would focus, uh, once again on making sure that we're following our comprehensive plan, uh, that we're building, you know, high quality, low density, um, residential and unique boutique retail. Maybe getting tired of hearing me this, but, uh, it, this is so critical because you only get to do it once.
Yes.
You only get to do it once. And, and if you think, anyone thinks, I'm going to say, you know, that, that overbuilding or getting a whole bunch of retail is going to, uh, lower your taxes, it's just not true.
That's.
It's not true.
Exactly right.
Police, you need more fire, you need more, you know, roads, you need more schools. Uh, and schools frankly is your number one tax in our community.
It is, seventy something percent.
Yeah, so, you know, s- stocking up more schools and building more schools is not going to lower your taxes. So, so I guess to me, that's kind of the salient point. Let's stop this false narrative that, that, uh, people are going to lower your taxes and Heath's taxes, uh, by, uh, developing.
Yeah.
Yeah, not going to happen.
Very good. Jeff?
Yeah, so, uh, I think obviously you see taxes is, is my number one concern. It's the number one concern for me because it's the number one concern of the residents. Uh, protecting our single family neighborhoods is critical. We, we have a unique Heath community, uh, with large lots and I want to do everything in my power to continue that, not only for today, but for the next generation. Um, I do not want to over-commercialize this city. Uh, it, it is not that way now. We need to fight hard for that, uh, and I'm committed to doing that. Um, I, uh, am, uh, uh, have friends that are in the, uh, that are, that are firemen and that's kind of my dream job, that I was always going to be a fireman.
It's every guy's dream job, yeah.
Except when I probably would run to a fire and run the other way because I'd be scared to death.
Me and you both, yeah.
But that's kind of been my dream. And so, uh, I, I am, uh, have some concerns about, uh, the, do we need to go ahead and, uh, start working on a new fire station? Do we, uh, need to, uh, continue to invest more money? So I, I can't wait to sit down with Chief Siri. His team does amazing job. Uh, and I want to know, what does he need? What more does he need? What additional resources does he need? That's a big concern for me. Uh, you lose the safety and security of your, uh, city and, uh, uh, you, you're not in a good spot. So that, that's a big, big passion of mine. Uh, and then we've got some infrastructure concerns. Uh, we got some road issues that we need to continue to, to work on. We've got some water lines that we need to repair. So infrastructure is always going to be a big one. So those are the four or five, uh, big items that I, uh, plan to focus on.
Yeah, the single most expensive thing in, in any budget, it, it tends to be streets and roads. Concrete is such an expensive thing. So, yeah, that's.
It's not going down anytime soon.
No, it's, it's really not. I, I appreciate the fact that both these candidates have come in to talk directly to you, but they've answered my question. Now here's the opportunity for them to speak directly to you. So I'm going to give each one of these candidates the opportunity to explain why they are the one that you should be voting for on May first. And I'm going to start with Rich. Rich?
Well, thanks for this opportunity. I, I really do appreciate it. I, I, again, I've been around a while, uh, I know a lot of you. Uh, but there are many new people in this community that, that probably don't know its history. Uh, and it's a beautiful city, but it's had a pretty difficult, difficult history with, with development. Uh, and I was there for that and I'm still here because of the way that I voted and the way I've always voted and I will continue to vote. Uh, and I'm going to keep you as laser focus, number one customer, current citizen constituent. I know you moved into Heath for this open space and country feel. I know the amenities that you want and, and I'm here to deliver them. So please vote for me so I can continue my task.
Jeff?
Heath residents, uh, I'm so excited to get this opportunity to, to serve you and run for Heath City Council. Uh, I, I got into this, uh, because, uh, I am concerned that the next generation has seen all the negative, uh, political rhetoric over the last four to six years. And, uh, I, I've been preaching to my kiddos and anybody that will listen, uh, that we need good Christian conservative leaders to step up. And, uh, I figured, uh, instead of preaching it, I better do it myself. And so that's really ultimately what got me involved. Uh, I will work hard for you. I am committed, uh, to keeping and protecting our small town feel, to not over-commercializing this great city, uh, and to work hard to, to continue to, uh, keep our city safe. Uh, those are the, the passion items that I have, uh, and those are the passion items of the residents of, of this great city. So, uh, I appreciate your support. Uh, early voting is April nineteenth, the election is May first. Uh, I, I'm a big believer in transparency. If you have any questions or, or concerns, feel free to go to my, uh, website, ivyforheat.com. Uh, if you want to text me or call me, my phone number is nine seven two four eight nine three seven two eight. Again, that's nine seven two four eight nine three seven two eight.